Good evening. A call to order, the November 24th, 2025, meeting of the Warrick County Commissioners. Please rise and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. So the area plan commission, we have three items on the agenda tonight. The first one are sidewalk acknowledgements for Woodfield Section 3 and Section 4. In Section 3, we have Lakefield Drive at 1,365 feet, Fieldwood Court at 1,161 feet, Woodland Springs Drive at 661, Ginwood Court at 76 feet. In Section 4, we have Lakefield Drive, 1,686, Woodmore Court at 1,270, and Foxwood Court at 1,673 feet.
And you should have the county survey acknowledge and signed off on acknowledging those sidewalk acknowledgements.
Yes, he did.
Yep. We're good. Bobby signed off. Acknowledge it. We don't accept infomaintenance. We just acknowledge the sidewalks were constructed.
So they're requesting a release of surety?
Yes.
Okay. We'll make a motion.
I will second that all in favor.
Aye.
Aye, 2-0.
Our next item would be a street acceptance for Lexington subdivision, PRUD. The streets are Staple Ridge Drive, 1,177.12 lineal feet, Ashford Drive, 1,009.33, Lennox Drive, 400.06, Essex Drive, 434.6, Ashley Drive, 434.21, Thornbury Circle at 114, Ashford Circle at 145.58, and St. Clair Drive at 915 lineal feet. County engineer has signed off on the construction of the streets, and I believe drainage was approved today as well, so they are ready to be released.
Yes, I believe that's what the previous county commissioners meeting, Bobby said he would handle everything as long as it was done in a timely manner, and I believe everything's been brought forward. We did approve the drainage board previously, that the drainage matters have been resolved. So Bobby's going to recommend we accept maintenance of the Lexington subdivision and Lexington Estates, which is not on here, but that was part of the previous, I believe, acknowledgement that was made at the last meeting.
I'll make a motion to release the surety.
I'll second that. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, 2-0.
Okay. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Ma'am.
I was for discussion approval of the 2026 contract with Purdue University.
I heard a little bit of something.
This is our annual contract for services between the county and Purdue University for extension services. There is an error on the back page. Our appropriation amount is 151,512, so there needs to be a correction made and by the university and sent back.
So Debbie, can I go ahead and make a motion to approve contingent upon Purdue?
Revision of the appropriation. Total contract amount?
The contract amount of 151,512. Good with that? Okay. Make a motion to approve contingent upon that.
I'll second the motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Totally report from weights and measures.
That needs to be tabled until December 22nd. He couldn't make it.
Okay. Approval of community corrections grant contract.
Community corrections applied for a grant. I have a copy of the application, I believe it was last March, and the total sum is $272,303 with a local match of $110,553.83.
Jennifer Fu, Warrick County Community Corrections. I believe the grant contract reflects the numbers that were budgeted last spring after the commissioners approved this grant budget, so did the Warrick County Community Corrections Advisory Board. An award letter and grant contract was sent to Warrick County from the Indiana Department of Corrections. I believe that the Warrick County Commissioners received that grant contract. I myself have not received that grant contract.
There is a copy of the contract in your books.
We are asking that the grant contract be approved as it has been previously approved by the Commissioners Advisory Board and DOC.
So I think the holdup here has been the payment of benefits. Are we, have we ironed that out yet? Are we still?
Yes.
So we're good with how?
We're good with yes.
Okay. So I'll entertain a motion to approve.
Make a motion to approve.
I'll second that. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Review of animal control building improvements.
The committee for the GO bond met with Darren Morley of Morley and Associates and Brandon Russell, the new animal control officer, last week and approved a, we approved tentatively a plan for improvements at animal control. I asked if Darren would come and make a presentation this evening so that hopefully we can move forward on one of the projects that's in the GO bond. And I've passed out a copy of the design to everybody.
It's very exciting.
And yours, Darren.
Let's hear it.
Good afternoon. My name is Darren. I'm Morley with Morley. As Debbie mentioned, working with, working with Brandon in animal control, we've developed the floor plan that sits before you guys as far as 11 by 17 print. We are proposing a minor renovation, minor remodel to the existing facilities as well as a small addition to the existing facilities. Currently, the existing facilities are about 2200 square feet, 2260 to be exact, and the new addition would be adding 1,660 square feet to that facility. This would give additional office space for staff, a dedicated adoption room, areas for both healthy dogs, large and small, separated for care of the dogs as far as to reduce stress levels and such, areas for dedicated for sick dogs, dedicated for bite dogs, as well as providing additional area for cats as well. The, this also includes the creation or addition of a dedicated exam procedure area for the animal control. Currently, that space is shared between some different uses and just additional work and work area for the animal control staff.
So Darren, was it 16 more kennels altogether?
Do you know what total capacity that was?
10. There's, there's 17, 17 block wall kennels, so interior runs, I would say, as well as two, or it would be four small dog crates. In addition to that, we've added about 14 small dog, the ability for 14 small dog crates or cages that are stacked too tall in the sick and bite dog areas.
Oh, is that what the little?
That's what the small squares are, yes. As well as adding additional plumbing fixtures, mop sink in those areas to make it easier for staff to clean after, clean up after the dogs and so on.
So they could certainly house more dogs appropriately?
Yep.
And that would be very good.
I love that we're separating bite dogs, sick dogs, healthy dogs.
Yes.
And I love the adoption room.
Yes. And then the intake, it goes directly from outside straight to where they can go ahead and get their shots and whatnot, so that's cool, too.
Yeah.
So, all right.
A lot of good thoughts.
Any questions or?
No, I enjoyed meeting with you, so thank you.
Do we have a?
You can, you can, if you want, make a motion for him to move ahead with the design. I think we talked, if you started now, we could be bidding in, what, February, maybe?
Yes.
I'll make a motion to approve the design to move forward.
I'll second that.
Thank you. This is originally in the GO bond.
Yeah, we have already dedicated funds for that for the public.
Thank you for all your work on that.
No, we bet. Thank you. This is exciting.
Remember how much it's going to be.
Moving on to action agenda, approval of the minutes from the November 10th, 2025. I guess we didn't look at the record.
They are in?
Yes, I had you here.
Going back. He's here. Are you here to sit?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes.
I'll second that.
Okay.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Not, not a yet.
Cliff, are you okay with me just popping in? Do we need to note that I'm on, in the meeting now?
We did.
Good, thank you. So I'm aye.
Carrie's 3-0.
Next up, EMA contract with Mounts Electric.
Matt Gable, Warrick County EMA Director. This is for Mounts Electric to fix the Siren and Chandler on Six and Adam. It is leaning really bad, and we need to reset, get a new pole, and we're going to do all new electric on there because it's in pretty bad shape.
Is this money coming from your budget now?
Yeah, communications.
Make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
Yes.
So we have a first and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you, Matt.
Okay. First on my list is approval of pay voucher, payroll voucher number 24 in the amount of
Should I probably pay the payroll?
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Next is accounts payable voucher dated November 24th, 2025, in the amount of $3,858,906.10.
Make a motion to pay the claims.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
The next is approval of pay estimate number 30 to RQAW, $76,998.60. Corporate design, $274,069.58. Davies County metal sales, $45,109.16. Patriot Engineering, $1,275. Dale Technologies, $5,504.31. CDW Government, $906.84 and $3,871,041. And Centerpoint Energy, $2,051.72, for a total of $409,786.62.
Motion to pay the pay estimate number 30.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, the next is approval of an opioid grant agreement. Last meeting, you approved $25,000 to the men and ladies of honor, and tonight I'm asking that you approve the grant agreement.
So, man.
I'll second that. All in favor?
Aye.
So 2 and 1 abstaining.
Next item was approval of the contract with Baker Tilly. We tabled that last month, last meeting, and I'm going to ask to table again. I have not received word back from Baker Tilly what the contracts are.
I wouldn't table them. I'd just take no action.
Just take no action? Okay. Next item is the approval of a new Warrick County social media policy. This has been approved by the Health Department. That's where it originated. They needed it before they could actually set up a new Facebook page for the Health Department, and I know that animal control is also very anxious to do as well. And so Erin Allen has reviewed this, and what you see before you is the final draft of the policy.
If you would.
Sure. So with a, with a county this size, we have to be careful that information is being disseminated that's authorized to be sent out and accurate. So right now, obviously, with Facebook and the different social medias, it's hard to sometimes control whether it's an account actually set up by the county or by some other entity that maybe is intentionally or unintentionally trying to speak on behalf of the county. So the idea of this policy is to bring it under somewhat one umbrella, so it places a lot of that burden on the IT administrator. So he or she, he in our case, will be in charge of creating and managing all social media accounts, ensuring that any accounts that are created on behalf of any particular department or the commissioners themselves follow certain Rubik and guidelines that we have. He does also have the power to grant to department heads or elected officials the ability to set up their own social media accounts for their respective departments, like animal control, like health board, just again to make sure that whatever information is being sent out there to the public is coming from the county and not from some other source. And it also helps with two other situations. One, when we have employee turnover, that, that IT administrator has all of the keys to all of those sites, the passwords, the usernames, so that when, again, we have employee turnover, he or she can ensure that there's a seamless transition of those accounts, number one. And then number two, under Indiana law, we do have a duty to maintain certain records, records, and that includes social media posts and activities that go on, on those pages. And so again, that will be on the IT administrator to make sure that we're following Indiana law on that. So that's kind of the intent of this.
I haven't had a chance to review that completely, so I've got two questions. What does it do to the accounts that are existing out there? Does it ask for administrative rights for Guy?
So it, it doesn't speak necessarily to that. We had, this was quite a bit longer, and so the intent of this is forward looking, but it does give him the power to every single account out there right now that is intentionally a Warrick County account. He would go to that department head or that employee and, to your point, ask for those credentials, make sure he has them, review those pages, make sure they're accurate, and they follow our, our guidelines.
So this is probably like a whole different project, if you will, but there are still what I would call orphaned accounts out there that are probably under personal people's pages that need cleaned up. There's just, it's, it's, it's an absolute mess out there. I don't know that we've got a way to go clean those up, but that's just something, I guess, I'll say out loud, and maybe it'll be a project for another day.
I think that's exactly it. We had in here deadlines of 30 days this, but Guy's going to have enough to control and do, so I think, to your point, that is a separate project because it may involve having to go to Facebook, to Instagram, to whomever.
Probably have to appeal to them.
Exactly. And they don't always grant your appeals. So anyway, he does have the power to do all of that in here. It, it just acknowledging that a lot of administrative burden is placed on him. We didn't put deadlines or requirements for him.
I know we've got a couple of departments, if not more than that, that need to move forward now, so I'll make a motion to approve if everyone else is okay.
I would like to make a recommendation. I know when we were kind of batting this around, you know, there was question about giving the credentials upon exiting employment, and I feel like he should have it ongoing. So I would just like to make the recommendation that at least every 30 days or so, our IT supervisor logs in, make sure that those credentials are still active and they haven't been changed, so.
So if he has administrator privileges, he should be good.
Yeah, and that's pretty easy to, to set up and then grant that, or him set it up and give it to somebody else, but as long as, I just feel like periodically they need to be checked to make sure that they are still the, the right username, password combination.
So I'll second Terry's motion.
Okay, so we have a first and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Here's 3-0. Much needed.
The next, I have approval of Warrick County animal donations in the amount, total amount of $1,366. The first is from Alinda Jarboe in the amount of $200. Next, Dee Davis, $40. Next, Marsha Pryor, $910. Next, Lindy Wilder, $50. Next, Russ Stillwell, $100. I don't know how to say the next one. Kiko Hashimoto or something, $20. And Kimberly Gentry, $46.
I'll make a motion to approve the donations.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And that's all I have.
Thank you, Debbie.
Sherry Severs, Warrick County Acquisition Administrator. The first item on my agenda is Mescar Construction. On November 13th, Mescar Construction completed repaving the Lynnville EMS parking lot. During the project, they encountered an issue in the front of the bay doors that required removing a significant amount of oak concrete, leveling, full depth patching. This additional work resulted in a change order, number one, totaling $1,365.39. As indicated on the Excel worksheet in your packet there, I have, we have enough money in our contingency budget to cover it, so today I'm seeking the Commissioners' approval for ratification of change order number one for Mescar Construction in the amount of $1,365.39 for work performed at Lynnville EMS.
Make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, Commissioners. The next item on my agenda is, back in January of this year, the Commissioners approved First Patriot Painting, Judge Roy's courtroom, Superior 2, in the amount of $2,850. We've worked with First Patriot for many months, trying to get them lined out on their certificate of insurance requirements, but unfortunately, they were unable to meet our expectations. I have received a quote from Turpin's Painting for the painting of the courtroom for a cost of $2,125, resulting in a savings of $725 to the county. Additionally, there is an area that's in the ceiling that's cracked. The drywall could use some repair and two coats of paint would be an additional charge of $1,250. We didn't, when Patriot bid that, they, they didn't look at that, so I'd like to break it down into two motions. So today, I respectfully request that the Commissioners approve and ratify the painting of Superior Court Number Two by Turpin's Painting in the amount of $2,125.
I'll make a motion.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, Commissioners. And then additionally, I don't know, because I haven't talked to Debbie about the extra work on the ceiling for $1,250, if we would have the funds for it currently or not.
Were we taking this out, we weren't taking this out of our, right?
No.
Okay. Yep. Outbuilt, yeah.
Okay, okay. So additionally, I respectfully ask Commissioners to decide whether they want to repair the cracked ceiling drywall for an additional $1,250.
I'll make that motion. I mean, obviously, we want to do it right, correct?
And then we're still $750 ahead?
Yes.
Right, so we're five, four, five?
Yeah, and some change.
Okay.
So yes, I'll make that motion to approve.
I'm going to say no, and I haven't seen it, so I'll just say no.
Okay.
It's all I can fix, a drywall crack.
Okay. Yeah, well, in order to fix the drywall toward that ceiling curves around there, in order to fix that, you've got to paint that entire backsplash, so that's why it's a little bit more money. Okay.
I'll second it then. It's all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, Commissioners.
2-0, yeah. Fair one. No, I'm.
No, it was a no.
Oh, okay. Yeah.
The next item on my agenda is ratification of DeBarre Kimball, a repair leak in the Judicial Center restroom, lower level mince bathroom. Last week, we, we were experiencing a leak from a urinal located in the restroom, the lower level, JC. Our maintenance staff was unable to remove it from the wall to repair. We have reached out to DeBarre Kimball to obtain a price for the repair. The total cost is $887.93. I have reached out to Debbie Bennett Stiersman. She has confirmed that there are funds there to cover this. Today, I'm asking the Commissioners if they want to move forward with approving the contract for $887.93 for the repair.
Is there a motion? We need that, right? Yes, I'll make a motion to approve.
Again, I don't, I'm going to say no on this one.
I'll second the motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Oh, no, sorry.
All opposed.
Thank you, Commissioners. The next item on my agenda is ratification of Tri-State Fire Protection. Last week, you had, our last Commissioners' meeting, you had approved services for fire extinguishers at the Highway Department for the maintenance. We are currently in need of extinguisher maintenance for the Drug Court Building located on Highway 62 East. The total of this is 583. I kindly asked the Commissioners to approve and ratify the service agreement for fire extinguisher maintenance for Drug Court Building in the amount of $583 with Tri-State Fire Protection.
Make a motion to approve that one.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, Commissioners. The next item on my agenda is commercial laundry equipment for the new security center. Bill Nix with Program Partners and I have been working on procuring commercial laundry equipment for the new jail. We have used the informal quote method in accordance with IC 522-83 for small purchases between $50,000 and $150,000. We reached out to three suppliers, CSC Service Works Laundry Equipment Company and Odell Equipment. CSC Service Works was non-responsive. We received two responses. One company bid Milner Commercial Products, the other bid Unimac. Following additional research, we concluded that the Milner product surpasses the Unimac product in quality. Nevertheless, Unimac alternative is offered at a lower price, as evidenced in your packet, so the Unimac product came in at $67,058. The Milner came in at $74,250, so it's obviously a price difference of $7,192. Our goal is to provide the sheriff in the new facility with the very best equipment available within the price range. Given the price difference, Milner is known for its durable machines, strong built quality, and excellent wash, wash results. In contrast, Unimac is recognized for faster drying and higher efficiency. In accordance with IC 522-8-3, we re-recommend rejecting all bids citing the reason that we prefer the superior product of Milner due to its durability, quality, performance, and longevity. We ask that you would allow us to revise the product specifications for Milner products only, comply with IC 522-7, allow us to prepare written documentations rejecting all quotes, issue a new informal quote request specifying Milner only, invite the same vendors and any other known Milner vendors for the sake of fairness, evaluate new quotes, and award to the lowest responsible responsive offers consistent with IC 522-10-5. As stated above, I respectfully request all of these things from the Commissioners.
Make a motion to allow Sherry to do exactly what she stated.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, Commissioners. The next item. The next item on my agenda is presentation of cleaning vendors for the Judicial Center. At the Commissioners' meeting held August 27th, Commissioner Seaton requested quotes for outsourcing custodial services at the JC. I've reached out to the following three commercial cleaning companies to obtain estimates for cleaning the Judicial Center. AAA Cleaning Service, Clean Team Commercial Cleaning, and Serve Pro. As you can see from the references in your paperwork, Clean Team currently cleans Henderson Judicial Center, Deaconess Hospital, Edge Crest Office and Clinics, Taylor Made Distribution Offices and Distribution Center, TJX Distribution Offices and Distribution Center. Also, AAA Cleaning Services currently cleans St. John the Baptist Catholic Church and School, Holy Rosary Catholic School and Church, USI Shoe Carnival, and George Cook and Sons. I provided all three companies with the scope of work that I provided to you in your packets. Additionally, all three companies have conducted a walkthrough for the Judicial Center. I have provided you on the next page with an Excel worksheet that breaks down these costs. And so basically, we've asked them to to quote daytime cleaning hours from 8:00 to 4:00 versus nighttime cleaning hours. And if they do the nighttime cleaning hours, we have asked for daytime porter service for the bathrooms from 11:00 a.m. until 1:00 p.m. So do you guys want the monthly or the annually annual price?
Monthly.
Okay.
Yeah.
So AAA service for cleaning, regular business hours, 8:00 to 4:00, $14,790 a month. Clean Team for cleaning during regular business hours, 8:00 to 4:00, $13,125. And Serve Pro, cleaning 8:00 to 4:00, $14,716.7. I do have your annual prices below that. Cleaning during evening hours, AAA, they were at the same price, $14,790. Clean Team was at $10,750, and Serve Pro was at $18,389.58. For porter service, AAA did not provide a quote for that. Clean Team was at $1,500 a month, and Serve Pro was at $1,397.50. I have listed additional services that AAA did provide, just breaking down on stripping and waxing and spot cleaning. And then I dig in an annual service for stripping, cleaning, waxing, terrazzo floors, and the BCT tile on all the quarters. Clean Team was at $5,865, and Serve Pro was at $139,695.
They were in the same place, right?
Yeah, we were at the same, yeah, yeah.
Wow.
So I just wanted to present those to you to make a decision.
You don't have any square feet that JC is?
It's about, I believe, and Terri might know this better than I, I'm thinking about 72,000 square foot.
So 90 cents a square foot to clean the floors. Well, that wouldn't all be?
That's just.
No, yeah.
We'd have to, we'd have to walk it out.
Because that definitely needs to be done.
Square foot, so. Yeah, that definitely. It's actually a lot less than I thought it was going to be. This is definitely something that we're still wanting to talk about without a decision being made right now. I do like what we talked about with an oversight. Can you share that with us?
Yes, so AAA Cleaning has also reached out to us and, you know, they're, one of their main concerns was if you did hire an outside source, what about the current employees? And they are willing to take the current employees under their wing and and teach them.
And then remain county employees.
There's a couple way they they could do it. They would, they would request a conference, of course, with the three Commissioners to discuss all of the options, yes. Because I don't know that they offer any type of insurance or anything like that. So that's something, if you're wanting to discuss those things in addition to what we've provided for you today, certainly they want to set up a a meeting.
So I think what that would look like would be that the county employees would remain county employees there, they would just be a resource that would train them?
They would train them and 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 actually, they would go back behind them to make sure that they're cleaning to their quality and specifications.
And at some point in the future, we could step away from that process once they're comfortable and the performance is where it needs to be. And I don't think, none of this, none of this was about specific employees or.
Correct.
Any of that, it was, we have massive buildings and we need help because things aren't being done. And I don't know if, you know, we've asked for rotate, like a cleaning rotation, a schedule, you know, kind of thing. So I think having some solid leadership might not be a bad place to start.
So I met with the ladies, yeah, and I met with the ladies of Debbie and Sherry on Friday, and most of the things that we were trying to get across, this needs to be done, they weren't, that communication wasn't going to them whatsoever. So I'm glad you said that, because I think as we get a new leadership in there and let that leadership, I mean, it's still separate, or as good as your leadership, if your leader's not going to lead and show you and and guide you, I hate to let them go and not have anything, but I think we need to give them a chance to step up to the job as well.
I think so too, and I think what's appealing.
And they were very willing, they were very willing.
I think what's appealing about that that potential is that we are going to have a new facilities, what is that position?
Manager.
Manager. That's going to be learning the ropes. And to turn to that person, expect them to train a janitorial staff, I think is asking a lot. But to have a experienced leader that can do that for them and then step away without us losing any staff, I think might be something worth us all sitting down and meeting with.
Yeah, you know.
Didn't you say you could set up a meeting where we could actually speak to them?
I think Debbie has sent out possibly an email on that.
I tried on the 12th, yeah, I have, Stacy's the only one that's responded.
Okay.
I don't think I sent.
I'll say that again.
Would they also give you a price on that?
Yeah, they they want to come in and sit down.
So the 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 machine that does the terrazzo floors, terrazzo, however you say that, the ladies, the reason that looks that way is they've never been trained on it. So this person would, this company would be able to go and train them how to use that.
You know, there's a couple different options there, whether whether you all do outsource or not, because they they, everyone looked at our equipment, and we really do have very nice equipment. We really did not skimp on that, we've got great equipment. The problem is, you can't expect people to do something if we haven't presented to them what what we expect.
Correct.
And a sheet.
And how to do it.
And how to do it in training, you know, I can look at that thing, but I couldn't operate it, you know. So, but yes, and so if you don't go with the outside funding, we could also reach out to our chemical supplier, he'll come in, because we would buy the chemical from them, they sell the machines, they would get that representative out here and do a training seminar for our staff, if if that's the way the Commissioners would like to go. So there's, there's a lot of options.
Looking at the sheriff reminds me as well, what are our plans for the security center as far as custodial?
Yeah, he's gonna have even a larger area, would you mind coming up to your sheriff? So, you know.
If we like one of these companies, could that be a possibility?
I don't know, what are you, gonna have $80,000 square foot out there?
Sheriff Mike Wilder, we have 83,000 square feet. However, some of that won't be done by, it's where the inmates are, and they clean up after themselves and stuff. But I mean, I have a plan, I'm not sure I want to present it this second, so I go cancel. But I mean, I have my own maintenance man, and we do have a, I mean, I have a plan I'd like to keep, I've got something I'd like to do with him. And then we have a, we're gonna, we have a custodian now, which I'd like to have her full time, she cleans like 10, I mean, probably 2,000 square feet, she's gonna be cleaning 45,000 square feet out there with, she cleans two bathrooms, we have 16 bathrooms. It's gonna be probably more of a full time, so there's, I hate to have a discussion here, I think it needs to be a bigger discussion, but yeah, we have a big hurdle coming in front of us, or.
Sure. I didn't need to put you on the.
No, that's okay. You know, also, we're, you know, I have spoke with her, and she's kind of, we went back and forth, but you know, I'm a little guarded too about having outside people come into our facility, we have a lot of stuff sitting out that's private nature, so it's kind of nice when you have a little bit of control of that employee, and control of who's coming in your building and what times and stuff.
Of course, and you know her.
Yeah.
And she's a client, yeah.
Thanks.
Thank you.
So I think at this point, we'll do nothing but plan on meeting with the company.
So we'll get, yeah, get a meeting set up, maybe to do some discussion, okay? Thank you Commissioners. The next item on my agenda is surplus of IT equipment and miscellaneous computers, scanners, monitors, several old monitors, computer scanners and printers in the Health Department and other county departments were recently declared surplus by consensus vote by the Commissioners. We were on a timed schedule there because everything needed to go to Dell to get credit. There were 24 computers, 30 monitors, seven printers and scanners. Dell has picked up all items and will issue a credit on our county Dell account. Guy has provided us with an itemized list that includes all serial numbers, makes some models. Today I am simply asking the Commissioners to ratify this decision in a public meeting for record.
All right, we'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you Commissioners. And I do have one add-on. Back in August, I had received a price from Crystal Ball Carpet Cleaning for the old courthouse here of $2,809.60, and we've kind of held on to it just because of budget, money, issues of that nature. In the past, we have used Crystal Ball because they've been more competitively priced. Additionally, carpet manufacturers are moving away from recommending hot water extractions on two-by-two carpet, commercial carpet tiles, because in certain circumstances, that hot water creates the edges of the carpets to telegraph and peak, and they don't ever come back down, and that could be a tripping hazard over a long period of time. Crystal Ball uses what they call the bonnet cleaning process, which involves vacuuming the carpet, applying a cleaning solution to the surface, and using a rotary machine with an absorbent pad called, and that's your bonnet, to scrub and absorb all the dirt out of the carpet. The process is a low moisture method, meaning it dries quickly and there's no chance of carpet telegraphing or peaking on the edges. I have verified with Debbie Bennett Stiersman, we do have the funds currently to cover this much-needed services for the old courthouse. Today I'm seeking the Commissioners' approval for the professional carpet cleaning by Crystal Ball Carpet Cleaning for $2,008.0960.
Do we know when this was done last?
That's what I was gonna ask, how many years has it been since it was last cleaned?
I don't think these.
It's never been done?
Never been?
It's only six years old.
Well, still, I have them come and do mine at my house.
Carpet and rug manufacturers recommend at minimum every year and a half.
Don't you have to keep it clean like that in order to guarantee the carpet?
Your carpet, the Carpet and Rug Institute and most of your carpet manufacturers recommend first and foremost that every carpet, every room needs to be car, vacuumed minimum once a week, or you void all your warranties. And then it needs to be professionally cleaned every year and a half minimum, or you void your warranties. But like anything else, sometimes the warranties are worth about the paper they're written on, you know, trying to really get anything taken care of.
The recommendations are there.
Yeah, but that's their recommendations, Carpet and Rug Institute.
Make a motion to approve the 2,809.60 with Crystal Ball.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you Commissioners.
I'm Bobby.
Debbie has the agreements.
First on the agenda is a contract between the County and Lockbuehler Group for the amount of $12,700 to do all the right-of-way services for Warwick County Bridge 140 replacement.
Yeah, this is on the New Harmony Road, it's a bridge Bobby has been working on. Bobby asked if he could get approval for the right-of-way services, and NDOT has already approved this agreement.
Make a motion?
I was just thinking, New Harmony Road, you said, right?
Yeah, it's the next bridge immediately west of Pigeon Creek. It's the one we got currently closed down to one lane.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, three zero.
The next is an approval of a change order to do additional common excavation for revised cross-sections. The amount of the change order is $14,730.
Again, this has been much work between Bobby Blankenberger Construction and the consultant, which is Lockbuehler Group. We finally got it narrowed down to that amount. It started out at almost six figures, and we got it narrowed down to $14,730. Bobby again asked for approval, change order to that amount.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Three zero.
Next is a change order for additional common excavation behind the curb. This is again on Telephone Road reconstruction for $26,340.
Again, this is part of the same discussion, we just had one in one area, and this is in another. Again, Bobby's recommended approval.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And I have a couple of items to add. I have two letters committing the local match funding for a grant that that the county intends to apply for, and I can't remember the name, Tara, the grant.
It's the Highway Safety Improvement Grant.
One of them is committing $11,000 in local fund to a $99,000 grant, and the other is $98,000 as matched to an $882,000 grant. One is for pavement markings, and one is for sign inventory. The local funds will be coming from Edit.
So approved in two letters?
Correct.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, three zero.
And this is with USI, do you know where the original contract stands? I think we've gone back and forth with it.
We've sent it to USI, from my memory, we're still waiting on USI to respond.
Okay.
Oh, maybe not. Oh.
It's, we sent it back to.
Okay, that's the last thing I had, like Friday, so maybe it just recently came back to us?
It was Thursday afternoon.
Okay, so yeah, since Thursday afternoon, we just haven't.
Did you check up?
Yeah.
Okay.
Is that Aaron?
Mm-hmm.
We're like two weeks behind on this.
It was in USI's hand until Thursday afternoon. So that's the last I've heard, until, apparently it was just in Thursday afternoon.
I don't care whose hands it is, and we're two weeks behind, we need to get it done if it's in your hands now.
Okay.
It's already been approved by the Commissioners, subject to the, so once we get it, we can just sign it.
Yep.
Because we already did it at the meeting. And the last thing under Highway, I received an email today from the sheriff that, to transfer a vehicle, a 2018 Charger to the Highway Department. And I guess we do that in a motion, Sheriff.
What is it, a Charger?
Yeah.
Yeah, Dodge Charger, Sheriff Mike Wilder. Bobby had came over and we'd offered to give them a vehicle, one out of surplus, out of one that we would have traded, so it just needs to be transferred over into their fixed assets for ours.
Yeah, this would be, this would be the second Charger, now they use it for a crew, a charling back and forth.
Okay. I think that needs to be.
Yeah, we take all the, all the DCS come on, it's, it's no longer a police vehicle for them. We gave a Durango to the Parks Department also, so.
They've done a Charger before with Bobby.
Yeah.
It's, it's got no further use for you, time mileage.
Right, the only thing we could do is trade, we'd get a little bit of value, but I mean, stay within the county, so it helps.
That's fine, we're just teasing, we're just teasing, we'd like to have it.
Oh. We get the Commissioner's one.
I'll make a motion to approve.
So it's an interdepartmental transfer, right?
Correct.
Second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, three zero.
Mine as well, stay there, Sheriff. That's all I have for Highway.
Thank you.
I have approval for a change order, this is on our CAD system. Warwick EMS had originally had a license for field ops, they're wanting to exchange it now for a mobile CAD. It's kind of hard to explain, but basically it's gonna, they'll have a computer in their vehicle, we kind of, otherwise it would be more like an iPad or a phone, but they need more information that that would give them, so they've, we've, changing that licensing agreement. This will actually be no cost. This will actually be no cost to the county, even though there's some money there, because we actually have credits. But it's just an agreement, but it was changed, so I still sent that to Cliff or Aaron to review the change order, because there's still like some agreement language in there, so they could review it just to make sure. And I think it just needs, I believe because of that, Cliff would probably want you guys' approval for that.
Yep. Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Stacy?
I do actually have something, and that is, and Terry will be able to witness this. Last Thursday during the solid waste management meeting, the Labor Day Association was brought up, and after that meeting was over, Mayor Charlie Wyatt approached me, and he wanted to just make sure. So for the Labor Day Association, we had already approved to give them $5,000 for 2026, and they have decided to go with another county, I guess it's Princeton or Gibson, Gibson County. So he wanted to know if we could reflect in our minutes to set aside that $5,000 for 2027 and make a note of it in the minutes, so that when the time came, that it didn't get overlooked or didn't get, just so that it was documented. Do we have to have another motion for that, or how do we move forward?
Make a motion, I mean, can't hurt. Make a motion to move the previously allocated $5,000 from 2026 into 2027 for the Labor Day Association event.
Thank you, I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thanks, Terry.
You have a long list. Steve Blankenberger. Going once, going twice. Carla and Joe, do you want to win? All right, Jennifer Hughes, done? This is nice, Phil Springston.
Thank you, Phil Springston, I reside at 899 East Tennesse Road, Boonville, Indiana. Been a resident of Warwick County for 43, over 43 years. On June the 11th of this year, I became a member of the Warwick County Extension Advisory Committee. The attorney will have to decide to do with the information I'm about to share, because you just approved the 2026 contract with Purdue Extension with no questions and no discussion. And so they are currently, Purdue is currently in violation of their 2025 contract. Their 2025 contract said they would provide three county educators. They terminated one in May, late April, May, so we, that position has been vacant since then. You just approved a new contract, even with the corrected amount that she gave you, is two and a half percent higher than last year's contract. We were guaranteed three education coordinators, then their new contract is very vague and says you will provide services, but there's no guarantee of three positions. The last time I checked, they have not even posted that position. I don't think Warwick County is getting good service under agriculture and natural resources with the lack of that agent. I was asked to be on the advisory committee after my concern for losing that spot. I mean, I don't know what to do, I mean, I don't, their answer will, I mean, I don't know what their answer is, maybe Carla has the answer, I mean, that comes from Purdue. I mean, I'm a huge Purdue person, I'm a huge extension person, and to lose our agriculture and natural extension agent is unheard of. But that's what's happening all over the state. And they'll probably tell you, we need more money, because now we have to have people come from other counties to provide those services. That's not going to happen. I've done the math, I think they owe us $28,742 from this year's contract, because if you take the amount divided by three and figure what that is monthly, and seven months with that one, that's money they got. And so I don't know, I mean, I don't know, at this point, I don't know what you can do, because you've already approved the contract, but I mean, I've had, Carla knows how I feel, Carla did not know I was coming here tonight. So she can, maybe she can answer questions.
So Mr. Springston, I will say it, it does say four program areas, agriculture, natural resources, health and human sciences, community development, and 4H youth development. I know when we had the emergency at the PBTT, Gibson County provided their ag agent, but I do understand what you're saying there, because-
Well, I'm just saying that the new contract says it will provide services, okay? The old contract said they would provide three county educators. Now we have two. They're already overworked, there's a lot of things they can't do. I mean, by law, the agricultural extension educator serves on the area plan. And when you don't have one, then you, I mean, you address that by the appointment, and now that person's not here, so. I mean, it's, it's, it's a budget cut, is what it is. I mean, and I just think that we, we have to stand up locally, and it's nothing against Carla or what they're doing, but I mean, it's, there's a seat vacant in Posey County, Gibson County's overworked, there's nobody in this county that can provide park points, Wednesday night, the class, the lady came down from Gibson County to do that. I mean, there's, I mean, I just, I just, you've already approved it, and I think somebody should pay a little more attention that, you know, while you didn't honor your 2025 contract, because you don't have three people here.
Well, I will say, Carla Kivell, Purdue Extension, I've been in Extension 25 years, and the contract's always service-based. It's to provide a service, and it's to provide A&R, 4H, community development. We've never had community development, but we have had people come in and do it, and then health and human sciences. I myself do not make the decisions. Purdue University is a very large organization, just as our county is a very large organization. And obviously, that contract is the same contract that's given to all 92 counties, with the exception of probably 10 right now that are going through some restructuring, so.
I was asked you to come up anyway, so thank you. I've got a specific question for you that I've actually had in the back of my head for some time, and I've heard things, but I don't know what's, what is and what isn't. Is there a plan to rehire somebody, or are they trying to regionalize the agricultural extension agent position? What is the plan?
I think what they're trying, well, right now, they're pilot testing in two areas. One is that Wayne County area that borders Ohio, it's four counties there, and then the other is right outside of Purdue University. So they're kind of trying to have staff specialize, and then you would service, like Abby Hyden-Radkis in Gibson County that we've gotten benefits from, her specialty is EMA, as well as agronomy, which is why she did PARP, so she would potentially, if that was our area, which is not our situation right now, she would be serving like multiple counties. But right now, if we didn't have a vacancy, we would not be affected, we would have three, no change is what the language is. So most of our area is operating, I mean, we obviously don't have enough staff, but.
So who can we have a conversation with?
I can send you our area director's email, if you want. Yeah, and then as far as plan commission, which Phil doesn't know this, because we just worked on this last week, with the vacancy of the surveyor, the law states that the extension board, after a application process, can appoint someone to serve in that seat if the commissioners deem they want to do that. So right now, it would either be the surveyor or an extension board appointee. That is, actually happens in other counties, because you have to be a resident of the county to sit on the plan commission, and not all Purdue staff are residents of the county, we just haven't had that happen here. So that is an option, I know Soil and Water was pretty concerned about if it is the surveyor, doesn't, they still don't necessarily have agricultural experience. So they had been asking, you know, some questions. So that's the answer to that, based on how you all want to proceed after the caucus.
Unfortunately, things move so slowly or so fast, sometimes you don't get to put your eyes on all the details, and I do think it's not a very good deal as far as the contract is concerned. It did go up, and now we've got less people, and if we have the service of an agricultural extension agent, they're coming from somewhere else.
They are, yeah, and the question, a lot of the things that the ag position, and Joe, they deal with a lot of homeowner questions. So right now, the person in Gibson County and the person in Spencer County have been amazing at answering those questions, but when they travel over here, they have been doing that. And right now, last week, they did advertise a position that would be a regional A&R position, and we would seek benefit of that, because right now, we don't have anyone. But what that's going to look like, you know, I don't know, I've just been told we would get benefit from it.
To your point about the community development stuff, I will, I will argue with you a little bit there, and I'm going to give Amanda a little bit of credit, I don't know what her job title said, and I don't know what her area of expertise is, but she conducted for me in Boonville Now several times, community development events, and that was probably outside of the scope of her job.
She did that with our regional community development person, yeah, that's, so that's a good example of getting those services. They're just not, and that was her, one of her passions, as well as the person before her, Gary Mikkel, that was one of his passions as well. We do have the services of a regional person, it's just we have to schedule them. And we've, they've done that before and came and done Boonville Now and some other things with this that have been good for our county, yeah.
That's something I think we need to continue to talk about, to Phil's point.
Yeah, so I'll send you that email, is that good?
Please.
The email, August, yeah.
Thank you, Carl. Well, I've talked to the lady she's going to put you in touch with, and I've talked to actually Angela Abbott, whose name is on this contract, and I started that conversation in May, okay, and I've talked to him personally. It took me over three months to get a copy through the Freedom of Information Act of the 2024 contract from Purdue University. It took me about eight days to get one from the county, when this all blew up in May. And so, kudos, and actually got this one today for the 2025, so. I don't know what the answer is, Terry. I mean, it's unfortunate, and I just feel, I mean, our chairman of our committee said he was going to be here, but I guess he didn't make it, so. I mean, it's, I'm concerned, the committee's concerned. If we don't keep this conversation going, you know, somebody decides, well, you know, we don't need to, we don't need you by there. And I mean, Amanda did go above and beyond and outside of her scope. I mean, the calls she would get from, you know, somebody moves out in the country, buys five acres, and they want to know what they can do, you know. And I mean, it's unfortunate, but other counties are dealing with the same thing, and I've, but I've learned through a lot of phone calls since May is the squeaky wheel generally gets the grease. So I would appreciate the commissioners any help to try to make sure we get that position filled on a county basis.
Carla, what's the person's name?
Lisa Wilson.
Is that a area director, did you say?
Yes, and then who Phil also talked to was our assistant dean, Angie Abbott, but the first stop would be the, the email that I'll send you, yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Norm Miller? Miller?
Good evening. Norm Miller, 6899 Miller Lane. This is a little different for me, I've attended all of your meetings since last July, and I do it from up there, in the balcony with the thousands of people-
Absolutely.
-that are watching that, you know. So I want to start and do something a little different, is brag on you. I know you don't always hear that, but since you were elected, you know, when you're watching these meetings, it's been fun to watch you two particularly, get up to speed, and you're doing really, I would, I would, you know, and Molly, and Debbie, and Sherry.
He knows us all by name.
My gosh, she certainly, I've never heard somebody do IC codes, she doesn't bury you two, Cliff, I want to tell you. So again, I've been watching that, and, you know, I've been here, I went to Chandler Grade School, okay, went from there to the first year at John H., Castle Class of 72, USI, ISUE, VU, back to ISUE, master's degree in personal financial planning, had my own personal practice, self-employed for 45 years, retired in 2018. I've served on the community foundation boards, I've served on the Economic Development Coalition when you were doing edits, taxes, and you're doing first to fifth districts, okay? I represented Warwick County before the Economic Development Coalition Tribe Board down in Evansville. So, you know, it's kind of like, why am I here? You know, I love your commitment to transparency, it's been really good, although I will have you note that your minutes haven't been updated on the website since August to tell us how you guys voted. Okay, so just, just, okay? You know, each of you, as you're doing your deal here, are building a legacy that's going to last long and long after your turn. It's going to last many years longer than your turn, there's a lot to consider, and in the end, you have to decide, and you have to vote, and that's your legacy. And the reality is, action is action, but inaction is also action, okay? So why am I here tonight? Instead of sitting in my red recliner, watching you guys in front of the fireplace tonight? Well, it's really because in the September 22nd meeting, a number just keeps killing me in my head, 22 million cubic yards, 22 million cubic yards. Now, I'm a numbers guy, okay? A cubic yard is three by three by three, okay? It's 594 million cubic feet. Anybody go to NFL football games?
Yes, I do.
Yeah, anybody else? Yeah? How many do you think, how many, how many of those stadiums do you think it would take to fill with 22 million cubic yards? It's 15 to 22, to the brim, okay? You're sitting in the black stuff, okay? So I love, you know, I love Warwick County, I know you all do too. 22 million, it just haunts me. So I had to, you know, to take a little ride, and I went to the impoundment. It's 12,000 feet in, two, over two miles in diameter. I know you all know some of this, have you all physically been there?
Yes.
You have been, Stacy, have you been?
No.
Would you guys, I'll take you, I mean, it really is something that you can't understand until you see it, because you can't see it from the road.
My understanding is private property, yeah.
You can't see it from the road, it's hard to find, go to Google Earth, you know, you'll find it pretty quick. Now, I know there's a little bit of tension about discussing this, okay? But I've got landowners coming to me that I went to school with, and their whole lives are going to be wrecked if something tangible does not happen.
We are, we are in agreement, I don't know how many times we can say.
Well, agreement is fine.
Yeah.
Action is action, though. I hope Cliff is briefing you on the things that you should be doing to get funding, because there are the steps that need to be gone through, there is funding. There's been more money added in the Biden administration to try to clean some of this stuff up. And I believe, if I'm not mistaken, this is the only one that we have in Warwick County, the only one of these impoundments, if you will. So again, I've been asked by property owners to come here and discuss this tonight. I was asked in the past in Ohio Township, we started a group called CARE, Citizens Against Rate Explosion, because Chandler was trying to charge Ohio Township residents a higher rate in sewer charges than inside the town, when the infiltration problems were happening inside the town. So we raised money, we hired an attorney, we were going to file a lawsuit, we got it settled, we saved 30% for every person in, in Ohio Township outside the town of Chandler. I don't want to go through and do all that again, but this is a much bigger problem, you know, than that little sewer.
Can I stop and ask you a question?
Yes, sir.
So as you're talking, listening to everything you're saying, I agree that this thing is a concern, and I'll just say that simple fact. You're stating that there's funds out there. Help me out here, Mr. Attorney, it's private property, that's a complication of the whole matter. We can't apply for-
We can't apply for-
We can't apply for it for private- Simple, another simple statement is we can't spend taxpayer dollars on private property.
Okay.
We can't, the state can't, the feds can't.
The appeal at this point, almost- The, the appeal at this point almost needs to go to the property owner, who I believe the last we were told is, is working toward a solution independently because they understand their responsibility in it.
Okay. I did a briefing report for you, seventeen pages. You'll have some time down here the rest of this week. Read through. I mean, I'm not going to put this up on Facebook or do anything at this point. I'm here to, I hope educate and advocate because this thing isn't good. So I'm going to stop.
Here's what we're trying to do. I won't elaborate on details, but we're trying to get the state and potentially the federal government to come to the table and have dialogue about this thing, about mitigating it first instead of waiting for a disaster to happen. None of us know whether it's going to happen or not. It, it's concerning. I've been out there four times. I've seen it with my own two eyes. I've got my own pictures. I'm concerned.
I've been around it twice. And every time I go, I get, I'm waking up at night. I mean, this is, anyway. Sarah, I understand your answer, but I think a little more, I hope, research maybe will tell you that when a property owner does not have the financial means to remediate this problem, and you're talking about a potentially a hundred twenty million dollar problem, he ain't got it. I've never met him. I don't know him. You know, I've only talked to our passionate surveyor who resigned twice in my life. But when I checked him out with some people who certainly should know, they said, hey, he's a stand-up guy. So again, I hate it that he resigned frankly. But again, the ball can't stop there. And Sarah, I know I go too long and I apologize for that.
It's, 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 we feel your frustration. I hope you feel ours because we know this. And, and we also know that the, the process, we can't affect it going any faster than it is. We, we are on it. We are, we are advocates for our county and for the residents as well. There's just, there's, there are processes that have to play out. We can't just jump in there. We can't obligate funds that we don't have. We can't accept responsibility that's not ours. And I mean, the taxpayers, it's not.
No, this is not the county I'm talking about for funding. This is federal, state, IDNR, all of those things.
Right. Yes.
From what I keep seeing when I'm researching is it has to start with some kind of a resolution from the commissioners that declare that this thing is eligible for the AML, Abandon Mine Land Act and others. Now, I'm not an attorney. I've got a great disclaimer, I hope, in here that says, hey, I'm just trying to be a volunteer citizen, trying to help some leadership team, you know, that has good institutional knowledge, has new energy. Our first two female commissioners in the history of Warwick County, right?
Nava Connor.
Isn't that right? I'm still bringing it.
First two elected.
First two.
But we aren't the first. That was my only, we aren't the first.
You're not the first two females? Oh, I thought it was.
Nava Connor.
Yeah, Nava Connor.
Nava Connor. Yeah, she was, she was caucused and completed the term. We were the first elected. Yeah, that's fine.
But again, I want to stop because I promise to be brief and I don't want Cliff to, to go off the edge here. Okay? So.
I'll be happy to take a look at it. Absolutely.
We all will. We'll be, we'll be happy to. And I appreciate the work that you put into it. Are they different?
This is Terry here.
Can I please have one? I do the grant funding.
Okay. Yeah.
Cause I've, I've looked into that. So this will be interesting.
But again, it just, you get haunted with this and I know you guys are aware of it.
Yeah.
We're going to be watched because these guys are telling me, Norm, we need you to wind this thing up and give us some, some pressure. I don't, I'm going to trust, but I would like it to see it be a standing item on your agenda to give an update as to what is going on and what is happening there. It would help with the communications in the county, keep your citizens from having a hundred and fifty plus people want to get in here.
And that'll be a lot easier when we have a new surveyor, which will be caucused in tomorrow.
I know, but I sure.
That's, that's the touch point.
But the other thing that bothers you is why is this coming up? Why did it take Dennis who has the background in the coal industry, you know?
Because it took Dennis with a background in the coal industry.
To come in. So let's make sure the next surveyor, we've got lots of dams in Warwick County, you know? And, and when I was listening to drainage board coming up here, Mr. Fritz or whatever, talking about Howard Ditch and that. Well, you tell me what happens if Pigeon Creek is full of, what happens to that whole court?
And I will say, yeah, your three minutes are.
Way up.
I will say.
Thank you. You should have gotten me before.
I will plug Warwick County.
I shouldn't stop there cutting and presenting this to us.
Thank you.
Warwick County has received funding for levees and dams before. If they're on the endangered list.
Say it online. Yeah.
Thank you. Mr. Shields, you were on the list. Did you have something? Start that timer, Cliff.
Here it goes.
Jim Shields, eighty-three fifty-five Chestnut Drive. I want to thank that gentleman right there because he's really saved a lot of the three minutes that I consume every time I'm here. So he's done a great job. I want to start by issuing an apology to our county attorney, who at the last meeting was discharging his duties as timekeeper in this forum. And I did not comply the way I should have complied to your notification. I did it in public, so I'm apologizing in public. I humbly hope you accept my apology. Onto, I'm going to just add on to what he said, and I have started researching this subject. And because of three minutes, I'm going to say what I am after. I solve problems for money for a long time. I am the kind of person that when all of the pieces of the puzzle are not in place, I struggle, as he described, to rest. When our last surveyor was here and I heard a situation that the board was advised of an imminent danger, it caught my attention because it is a problem that I do not want to be reading in the Reader's Digest about Warwick County, Indiana, the way I have recently read about Asheville, North Carolina, and Camp Mystic in Texas. And as this board understands, I am supportive in a lot of ways. And I go out and check things from these meetings just to verify because sometimes this board doesn't get the recognition for doing the right things, only complainers. I'm not an alarmist, but I saw in those stories and those two situations I've noted that it's a public-private thing and there were many reasons I saw from public officials why action did not take place sooner.
Can I stop you real quick and you can hit the pause button on the timer if you want here? I'm stealing his time. I want to make clear that you referenced Asheville and Texas.
Yes, sir.
If this thing happens, and I'm, I'm going to borrow from Dennis's words, I'm not trying to put words in Dennis's mouth. It's going to be a slow thing where the slurry is going to come out and it's going to block the dam. And then the water will eventually rise slowly. It's not going to be some wave of rush.
I recognize it may not be a catastrophic failure at the beginning. I recognize that. However, it is from coal mine. There is no telling the level of pollution that may slowly come out that we will wish we never experienced it when it happens. Because I've been to Squall Creek when it was operating. I understand how those operations work. And there's a real good reason why our drinking water and our sewer systems have to operate a certain way. This would overwhelm the, I knew it was twenty-two football stadiums, by the way. When you look at that volume, there, we won't recover from it. I live down outside the town of Newburgh. I will be blocked from getting away from the river. And I'm not an alarmist. I'm really not. I'm starting to dig into, I want data to drive my thought because I truly don't understand what the worst case scenario or the least scenario would be. I don't have that understanding yet, but I'm getting closer all the time. I would say, do we have geological surveys of the area? Because that would be the data we need. We, we need to understand what's there and what have we been alerted to. And our last surveyor had a lot of information for that, I thought. And that, that's it. My three minutes are up.
There you are. Nice job.
Thank you. I really want to bring a car with me from now on.
After, after the start, he's not going to cheat you out of it.
I'm here for compliance.
Let me add one bullet point here. So there is data being collected from two different testing methodologies. I know what one is. I don't know what the other is. Those are being conducted by the landowner. We have asked for that data. Hopefully he'll provide it. I don't know that he has to. That's something to talk about a little bit later, but just so you know.
And, and so I, I get that. And I, I'm a person, again, when you're solving problems, I've worked for a multinational corporation that has a bureaucracy that doesn't ever want anything soft. So figuring out how to manage that whole thing, I would put it in this frame of reference going forward for us to think of it in these terms. If you were aware of someone doing something on their property that you got made aware of, may take out fifty surrounding homes, would we say it's on private property? There's not anything we can do. I'm not asking for an answer. I'm just saying a thought process to look at this situation because those other places I referred to, I read stories about, there were these mitigating circumstances that prevented action.
Well, and I think it was.
And, and they, and now they have the benefit of hindsight's twenty-twenty and saying, I wish I would have just. But we have the opportunity not to depend on it twenty-twenty. I think.
But we also, as of now, my understanding is the property owner is aware and is, is taking responsibility and looking at those resources that are available to him. If we were in a situation where nobody was accepting any responsibility whatsoever, it would be a different discussion. But I think that it, it would be premature for us to jump in when those steps are being taken by the appropriate person.
I'm not here to put criticism on any action taken at this point because I don't feel as if I'm informed enough where I could stand there and actually have a count of you. I, I see us as all on the same team. We're all, the, the interest here of everyone I spoke to is public safety of all my neighbors in Warwick County. I think we're all there. I think sometimes we can get hung up by a hurdle. Now, I'm going to do more investigation, but my understanding is the state already has money. It's, and it's in a fund that came out of every ton of coal mined in this state was put into a reclamation fund and that fund is full of money.
For the record, I don't personally believe that there's enough money in there to fix this.
I think it's going to be expensive. I do. However, until we start dipping in there and correcting the issue, I still wake up in the morning and say, is today that the Reader's Digest is going to have a story about my area? And I, I think that every day it keeps it important to me. And so I continue coming back to these meetings. I don't want to be the squeaky wheel that gets the grease. But until that last piece is in that puzzle for me, I'm going to come back. I'm going to keep asking. And we, we will collaboratively work until we can all rest and say, none of our neighbors are in any danger. That's all I got. Thank you.
Did you have a question or statement about the face of the social media policy?
Oh, I was, I was going to ask about the framework. You were talking about that. And, and I have worked in building a secure infrastructure for something that you were talking about. And one item we used was dual password. So no single person can access the system without another. And then under one umbrella, I don't know if you're limited by using Facebook. You know, that's just the, they throw their software out there and they have an infrastructure and you have to work with it. And my question was also going to be, do, do we have our IT person? Can they write code within another company's infrastructure so that you don't have to worry about department heads? They can have, have access to a tab inside a page and that's all the level of access they would need. And so like Terry was mentioning, administrator rights. Then this way you can have each department head can access their tab without accessing anybody's other information. And this way you only need two people for complete oversight of the system. It's one way to think about how to build that infrastructure. Because running the county is busy and, you know, and everybody, every time you tie someone up with a, what I would call a maintenance style of activity of somebody has to go in there. They have to see who is logged in and on this page and that page. And that takes hours. Like I used to describe, you know, I was required to go to a morning meeting. They wanted to tie up an hour of my day every single day. And I thought, they pay me five, five hours a week to sit there on my, begins with an A, but I'm not going to say it out loud. And if they want to pay me one eighth of my week for this, then okay. I was done. But the, 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 the software infrastructure thing, I wanted to lend some maybe way to make that security where you really only have two people and they really never need to get into it because these other people have a different set of rights just for tabs inside the software. Just.
Yeah, I appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Anything else?
I make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.